Welcome to the Discovery Tour, the Road to Africa Podcast Day and happy International Podcast Day to you. We are today connecting with the podcast communities in Zambia and North Africa. And we have just had a wonderful, really cool workshop from Jonathan of Hindenburg on editing. Up next, what is coming up next? We'd like to introduce to you our partners and really great community coordinators in Zambia who are going to introduce themselves. They run a social media, digital marketing agency called Yellow Ray Digital and they're also podcasters, they're media makers, they're storytellers. Welcome Belia and Adele.
How's everyone doing?
Hi.
We're good. How are you all?
We are good. We are excited. We are living our best lives here in the Saka, Zambia. We are doing the most and we're bringing you the energy you deserve. Yes.
We love to hear it. Tell us, tell us, tell us about who you are, what you're doing, what's popping in the Saka, in the podcast community.
Great. So this is exciting obviously for us. So my name is Adele and-
My name is Belia.
Yeah, so there's two of us. So let's introduce ourselves. Yeah, so Belia and I are obviously really, really super passionate about everything pro-Africa and everything, just about making noise for our country, making noise for our city, obviously the Saka stand. So yeah, so right now there's a lot of buzz, especially around this event. All of the podcasters that we are going to have on today's session later on are super, super excited. So it's not only created a buzz for the people that are already doing podcasting, but for the people that love to do podcasting. Lots of people are, you know, drawing inspiration from other people that are doing podcasting in Africa. So it's just a matter of time, but I'm hoping that this community will grow and we are super excited to be here.
Exactly. Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for that intro. I think we're going to be hearing a lot more from Zambia in the next session, but I see some amazing people waiting to join live.
Yes.
Yes. Our next session is going to be, is going to be led by Alex and Zainah from Kanning Cultures Network, which is a leading, one of the leading, they're so bomb, they're so amazing, leading podcast network in the Middle East and North Africa region that features stories from Middle East, North Africa and the spaces in between. And these guys have produced award winning, global level podcasts. They're no joke, they're no joke. Some of their podcasts, they have 12 podcasts and counting coming out of the network. They produced a show that was Apple's 2020 Show of the Year and among other Arabic and English language chart topping podcasts. So without further ado, Alex and Zainah, I'd love to welcome you. Welcome, welcome to the Discovery Tour's top one. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Oh, fantastic. I can't even explain how excited we are. And your session is on how to find a good story. And for everyone who's, who's joining, who's watching, we know we have very interesting stories to tell, or maybe you're curious and you think there's something you want to say through your podcast, but you're not sure how you're going to go about it, especially if it's something that's really new and alternative and that isn't in the mainstream. So Alex and Zainah have done it. They have done it and they've done it well. And so they're here to share their, share their, basically, you know, their cheat sheets. Welcome, welcome Zainah and Alex. Take it away.
Thank you, thank you.
That's so lovely. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, wow, what a nice intro that was. So I guess like, yeah, go ahead, Zainah.
I was saying, I guess we can start by introducing ourselves and tell you a little bit more about Kanning Cultures. Alex, do you wanna, do you wanna start?
Yeah, so I can introduce Kanning Cultures first. So Kanning Cultures is now a podcast network, started out as one podcast, one English language show in 2016, which was with the aim of telling stories about the Middle East and North Africa, but kind of from a local perspective. We started out in Dubai, which was where most of us lived at the time. And then since then, it's kind of grown and grown into a full network. And now we're, you know, producing, I didn't even know how many shows.
I think it's 13 shows now.
Is it 13? Oh my gosh, I put eight on my dock, which is obviously way more than that. But we're producing shows in English and Arabic now. And the shows range from documentary style narrative shows to sort of more personal essay type shows. And we had a science show and probably missing a bunch of stuff, but we've kind of grown from there. But I think like really at the core of Kanning Cultures is like real life stories and telling stories with nuance and telling the kinds of stories that we wanna hear ourselves. I think that's kind of was led what we do. So Zainah and I, just to introduce, I guess ourselves quickly, Zainah and I, well, we both work on the flagship show or one of the flagship shows, which is called Kanning Cultures, which is an English language documentary, documentary show. And so when we're talking about stories in this in this live stream, the kinds of stories we're talking about are kind of like documentary narrative nonfiction stories. I am a producer and I've been working with Kanning Cultures since 2016, just after it started. And I work part-time for Kanning Cultures and I'm also a part-time producer at The Guardian on their daily podcast, Today in Focus. Zainah, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Zainah. I'm Egyptian originally. I was sort of raised between London and Cairo. And I started working with Kanning Cultures, I think around two and a half years ago now. I started off as an intern and I was really interested in research and I think that feeds really well into our topic today. But I was a researcher for Kanning Cultures for quite some time. And now I'm producing my own stories with Alex on the Kanning Culture Show. So I guess we can sort of get started. And one of the questions that we get a lot is sort of what we look for in our stories. We have stories about really random nuanced things that sort of become its own narrative arc and become its own story. And we usually get asked, you know, how, how we find these stories in the first place and how we make sure that the time and effort that it takes to produce an episode is going to be worth it in the end. And I guess maybe I can start, the first thing that we usually look for is making sure that the story isn't tropey. We are looking to fill, you know, a sort of specific niche, which is telling stories about the Middle East and North Africa or the Swana region in general. And we do it in English and Arabic, but the stories that we tell, you know, we want to offer a bit more nuance than you'd usually hear from the region, especially in sort of US or European media. We're really interested in looking for histories that are unknown or personal stories that, you know, haven't seen the light of day or stories about music and culture that sort of connect across the world. For instance, one of those stories is Lebanon USA, which Alex worked on. Maybe you can tell a little bit more about that one.
Yeah, I think that's just like a good example of a story that, I mean, I love the kinds of Kanning Culture stories that connect to sort of seemingly unconnected parts of the world or seemingly unconnected histories. And the Lebanon USA one was cool. It was, it was a story about, it was a story about all of the towns in America that are called Lebanon, which were named Lebanon after, basically after the Bible. And I get, like, I thought it was cool because I get people, you know, people after hearing that story said to me that they kind of didn't realize that there was such a kind of deep historical connection between the US and the Middle East, in this case Lebanon. So yeah, those are the kinds of stories that I think I enjoy working on the most and they kind of feel the most fulfilling. And I think the kinds of stories that people can often see themselves or something about themselves in. The second thing we look for in stories is a strong narrative. So any time a producer pitches a story, the first thing that we're kind of immediately thinking about is like, what is the narrative thread of this story? Like, what's the sort of through line that is gonna keep the listener hooked? Like, where, when we pitch stories, we never really pitch stories as like, oh, this might be an interesting topic to look into. Like, you know, there has to be some kind of driving force behind it, if that's a character or some sequence of events that you can kind of use to hook the story around. And then we kind of get into bigger discussions about theme and topic and things like that. But I think, you know, the very basic thing that we're looking for is like, what is the beginning, middle and end in this story? Like, you know, where does the, where does the tension or the conflict come in? When, when does the tension rise and when does it kind of dissipate? And, and like, what's the resolution that listeners are gonna take away from that? And then the third thing that we look for, like, when we're pitching stories is characters. So, I mean, this kind of goes without saying, but in like narrative nonfiction, you need, 90% of the time, you need characters to interview for your story. And for us, like, I think, I think about 90% of our stories, we rely on like first-person experiences. So, you know, that doesn't always have to be something that somebody has lived through. I mean, we do a lot of historical stories, but you know, when we do historical stories, the way we try to get into them is, you know, looking for people who can tell that story from more of a personal perspective. So we did this story on Operation Nemesis, which is kind of a long story, but it's, it was basically a revenge scheme hatched by a group of Armenians against the perpetrators of the Armenian genocide in the 1920s. So this story happened in like 1918, 19 and 1920, 21. So it was like a long time ago. Everybody who was directly involved in the story is dead. And so, you know, we, we came into the story by interviewing one of the great granddaughters of one of the people involved. And she actually had this really beautiful story to tell about how she had kind of collected like little clues about her great granddad's life, like through just kind of tidbits that he'd left around the house, but she didn't actually know, she didn't know the extent of his involvement in any of it. And she didn't know that he was involved in this operation. So we told the story through her, like discovery of her family and, and then kind of used that personal perspective to kind of hook the episode around. And then, you know, we went and interviewed like experts and historians and all of that kind of thing. But like, the real core of the story was like this Marion, her name was, like her personal story and her personal connection to it.
Definitely. And I think that sort of really underlines the importance of pre-interviews. So many times we find stories where we think, oh, you know, there's this one person that we could interview that could really drive the story forward. And we do a pre-interview with them and they actually don't have much to say at all, or they're not a great character on tape. And I think something that we've learned, maybe the hard way is that even if it's a really good story, if the people telling it aren't good storytellers, it's, it's not going to sound good. It might be better as an article, it might be better as a documentary, but it just doesn't work as a podcast. So, you know, not only is it about having good characters, like people who are connected to the story, but also people who can tell the story in a way that's sort of compelling and that will draw your listener in and that's entertaining and funny and sad and can sort of bring emotion to the story. So sort of saying that, I think the, the next question that we usually get is where we find our stories? And you sort of, there's a bit of it that's strategy and there's a bit of it that's sort of luck and a bit of randomness. But the way that we usually find our stories sort of falls into a few main buckets. And sort of before I say that, I guess it's important to say that we always, always have to sort of keep an eye out for stories. It's never that, you know, you sit down with a book and you're like, I'm gonna find the story in this book. And then you just find what, no, you have to sort of almost be open to the fact that these stories or these threads of ideas can sort of come at you at any time. But there are some practical tips that I think we can offer in terms of where we can find those stories or where to start looking when you're looking for a good story.
Yeah. So I mean, we all have like different favorite ways to find stories. I think for me, like my favorite stories that I've ended up producing have been stories that have come about through pure serendipity, which is kind of like me literally meeting somebody and like hearing a story from them that you would never have found in any article or any book or any website or anything like that. But like, when I'm kind of in the mode of like opening myself up to stories and thinking about pitches, one of the first things I'll do is try and find books around stories or themes that I think could be interesting. It doesn't necessarily have to be that you're gonna base an episode on a book, although sometimes that happens. But I think like, there are, books are a really good starting point, I think, for a few reasons, because if somebody's written a book about something, they've already told the story in a pretty comprehensive way. And your job as a producer then becomes picking out the best bits of that book or, or books to kind of put together a like compelling radio documentary. That episode I was just talking about, Operation Nemesis, Marion had written a book, I actually didn't know about it before I found the story, but it turned out that Marion had written a book about her great grandfather and about his experiences. And it was, it was like a three or 400 page book. So there was loads to draw on, loads that we actually couldn't include in the episode. I mean, I should say that the way I actually came about that story was I was interviewing Marion about something else entirely. And maybe this is something about opening yourself up to stories. She, she's, she, she happens to be a really accomplished classical singer in Armenian classical music. And I was interviewing her for a completely different story about, about Armenian music. And she was just so lovely and chatty and we, we, we ended up chatting about her family and her family history. And that's when she told me, oh, my great grandfather was involved in this thing called Operation Nemesis. And I was like, oh, what's Operation Nemesis? That sounds pretty interesting. And then that kind of opened up this whole other. So Marion actually appeared in a previous episode of Kanning Cultures and then we went back to her and did, did a much more in-depth story with her about her family history. So like, that's kind of an example of like, you know, if you're kind of always open up, open to stories, you, you can kind of, they come to you in various ways like that. But yeah, for me, like books, memoirs, like essays are kind of a good place that I always look for stories.
Yeah, I think actually another one of our stories came from me reading a book review about the book, thinking it was interesting. It was called The Address Book by Deirdre Maske. And it's sort of all about addresses and how we have street names and street numbers and how addresses sort of help us and hurt us. And I thought it was really interesting. So I picked up the book that, that same day from the bookstore and I started reading through it. And there was this really incredible sort of side story within one of her chapters that talked about a street in Iran called Bobby Sands Street, named after the IRA sort of martyr Bobby Sands. And it was sort of almost like vigilant, you know, like it was renamed by some teenagers into Iran, the street that the British Embassy was on to sort of fight back to the British and change the name of their street to, to someone who was part of the IRA. And it was a really funny story and I didn't think much of it at the time, but as I started researching and looking and finding, we found some really incredible characters who can tell that story. And I think it's one of my favorite episodes to date that we've done so far. So again, that's sort of how books can open up ideas and stories to us.
That one's such a good example of just like how a tiny tidbit in a book, like sometimes the most interesting stories come from like, you know, a tiny, like a paragraph in a book that makes you think like, that sounds like there's way more to that story than I'm reading here. And I think some of our most interesting stories have come from like, just kind of finding something small that you're curious about and in pulling threads until you open up this like whole world that you wouldn't have kind of learned about before. Another, another place that we look for stories, this is a little, a little bit more rare and maybe requires a little bit more time, but audio archives are a really good place to look. We, since we do a lot of historical stories, like sometimes it's quite hard to like really illustrate those stories, especially if they happened before the era of like recorded tape or recorded vinyl. And so I think like, you know, instead of kind of reverse engineering it and like looking for audio from a, for, to illustrate a story, it can sometimes be a really good place to start where you, you look at the audio first. And, you know, there are lots of archives all around the world which specialize in preserving audio. And often they're quite, and digital, yeah, digital ones as well. And often I think they are quite overlooked. And there, I feel like, there's this one episode we did about the history of radio in Palestine. And the way we kind of came to that story was, we sort of learned that the British Library in London had a collection of audio tapes or not tapes, but like reel to reel kind of, I don't know what you'd call it, like reel to reel recordings of this, of this radio station in Palestine from the 1930s. And it just sounded like something that might have been interesting. And I remember we went down there, you had to like book an appointment and all of this and we went and, and, and listened to it. And the tape that we heard was just like so like arresting and sort of haunting and like fascinating, because it was this really unique like time capsule into this very specific period in Palestinian history, right as the British were leaving. And we just, it was, it was, that tape really just like started the kind of whole journey. And from there, that's where we built out and like, you know, found historians and like characters to speak to the story. But like, really it was that tape that-
That started it. Yeah.
I think another place we find stories, I mean, this, this is something that I sort of wish I was better at, but like, you know, I think some of our most interesting stories have genuinely just come from like people, like conversations that we've had with, with people, friends, family or even strangers. You know, we, one story we did, it came, I, I, I was hanging out with a friend in the UAE and he told me that he'd just come from visiting his dad's grave in Dubai. And then he kind of, it turned out that he knew a ton about the repatriation process and like, you know, this whole world of kind of like repatriation businesses and volunteers and this whole world of like, you know, people making decisions about what they do with family members after they've died in the UAE, because it's not like a straightforward answer, because, you know, the UAE is a very transient place to live. And so that, literally that conversation and him telling me about that sparked this whole kind of journey of going into like, looking at this world of, yeah, repatriation and the whole system and like hearing personal stories about people who had to make that decision. And I think it, that, that really was just like serendipity, like there was no, I wasn't looking for a story, I was just talking to a friend and it seemed like something that was interesting. And I think just like my final bit on that is like, it, I think often if you tell people what you do, people will tell you what stories they think you should do on your podcast. And like 90% of the time, it's like, they're so wrong and like what they tell you is just not gonna be a good story at all. But I think like, sometimes you can, you'd be talking to someone and say, oh, I'm a journalist or a radio producer. And like, 10% of the time, they'll say, oh, you should do a story about this. And like, sometimes it really, they'll like, people will tell you really interesting stories if you like, let them know what you do. So I mean, that, that's like, doesn't work all the time, but I think sometimes that's a, a good way of finding stories.
Yeah. No, I think that's really true. And I think especially for some of our Arabic shows like Jess Adi and Bahub, ones that sort of rely on, on personal essays, a lot of those stories come from speaking to people and sort of reaching out on Facebook or Instagram and seeing whether people have stories they want to share and sort of personal stories that they're willing to open up and be vulnerable about. So yeah, definitely speaking to people is something we use across all of our shows. Another way, and I guess this is one of our favorite ways to find the story is sort of looking at academic papers, because academics really, really know what they're talking about. If you're dedicating most of your life to sort of researching a few topics, most likely you'll have a really good idea of what it's all about. And they tend to sort of have a lot of connections in the field. They'll have done interviews. So for instance, for a story that I'm working on now, it was, we were looking for a family for a specific story and it was actually a professor, a doctor who was able to connect us because she has those connections. She's done fieldwork and interviews and sort of been there with them through it. So they have the interviews, they'll have the field studies and they'll know other academics you can speak to. And they're usually really, really excited to, you know, to speak with you. It's really nice. And I know this personally, it's really nice when people care about the things you care about. And when you're asking someone who's really spent a lot of their time, you know, dedicated to researching something to speak about it, they're usually very excited to do so and will do it with a lot of, you know, excitement and fun. And one other thing is that most academics sort of write in a way that's very dense and inaccessible, which also means that most likely they haven't really been approached by journalists before. So some of the topics may not have been in public media or popular media before. So that way you've sort of found yourself a bit of a niche story that like nobody else has really done. And, you know, you've got a super smart professor who's really keen to sort of bring their work to a bigger audience. I think, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Elephants in the Desert started off somewhat like this, right? Was looking at research that archaeologists have done and, and speaking with a lot of professors and a lot of archaeologists in the field. I think you're muted, Alex.
Sorry, sorry. I think the, the, the kind of thing I love about interviewing academics as well is like, often in, in the academic world, they are kind of, the way they write and the way they present their research is sort of non, is non-emotional, or it's not very emotional by design. And, but I find that like, as Dana said, like academics are often super passionate people and, and often really emotional about the work they do. And I think they often, you know, don't get given the chance to really speak on an emotional level about the work that they do. And so if you can kind of get the right academics to speak in the right way about the work, about their work and their research, you can come up with really great tape and like really emotional tape. Like we were, that elephant's one, it was a story about elephant footprints in the UAE, which is way, I can't explain the story in two seconds, so I won't try. But I remember speaking to one of the, the guys and he was, this is like elephant expert, like super immersed in the elephant world and the elephant history world. But when I asked him like what his sort of emotional reaction to being there was, he was like, oh, I cried. Like when I arrived and I saw these like footprints that I'd been researching for so long in real life, I just burst into tears. And I was like, wow, I just would not have expected that answer. But I think like it can really sort of lead to, yeah, amazing places with academics.
Yeah, definitely. And I guess sort of following up from that, following academics and academic type people and people who generally have interesting things to say on sort of Twitter and Instagram and, and other social medias is a really, really great tool to see what people are talking about, what, what's interesting, what's out there. Like one of the stories that I'm currently working on, I found because someone tweeted a picture of a stamp that was made in commemoration of this event, like a very random picture of a stamp that ended up being this entire story that I'm now working on. And I think people really underestimate, you know, the power of Twitter and Instagram and finding stories. And some people are like, oh, but it's already out there. Oh, already people are talking about it. But if you pull up those threads, you can really make something of your own and, and make it, you know, like as niche and nuanced and as personal as you want to make it. And like I said earlier, a lot of times we find characters through social media and it's a, I mean, one of, one of this, my favorite stories actually over time, we worked on an episode was we were working on an episode about the history, who invented the Arabic typewriter? And it was a really long episode and it took ages and ages to research. And just as I was joining Casey, they were looking to find the living relative of one of the people who like allegedly invented the typewriter. It was sort of two people and they were arguing, there was historical argument over who invented it. And I ended up searching through Twitter, searching through Facebook. I started, you know, messaging people on Facebook with the same last name as him, who also lived in the sort of Greater Syria area to see if maybe they were somehow related to him. And in the end, it was on like a blog post that was posted on Instagram, where I found someone who had commented, who ended up being a living relative of that person. So it's sort of really, a really useful tool to be able to find people. And yeah, other media like articles and blog posts and short films are a really great place to look. And, you know, sometimes we think like, oh, this is already done or it's already been made, it's already out there. But you can find your own twist to the story and you can find your own way to really make it into an incredible audio story. I think maybe like the ball is one of those episodes where we found it on another platform, but we really sort of were able to take the story and turn it into something else entirely.
Yeah. I mean, I think we sort of have a general rule, which is like, if something's already been done as a radio documentary, we, we generally won't do it because I, I think that, you know, we don't really wanna sort of go over the same ground that other people have done. But I think that like audio is such a special medium and often, you know, we'll find stories that we've seen in print or maybe it's like photo essays, like Lebanon USA came from a photo essay. And I think once you've, you know, there's, there's a kind of point where you, you sort of start realizing like, oh, that would actually work really well in audio and maybe even better in audio. And I think like we, that's like, you know, something that- And I think like we, that's like, you know, something that, you know, when you're looking out, looking out for stories, I I think like, don't be sort of put off if something's already been talked about in print media, because like audio is a completely different medium and the way you're going to tell the story will be completely different. And even just hearing people's voices is is completely different. And yeah, like we said, some things are born to be print. I think some things are also born to be audio stories. And so, yeah, I mean, kind of on from that, like a lot of the way, another really good place I think to look is in newspaper archives. The New York Times has an amazing thing called Times Machine, which is basically like an archive of every single article they've ever published. The Guardian has something similar. Sometimes if I'm just have some time to spare or whatever, I'll I'll just kind of enter in random keywords into into those newspaper archives and see what comes up. And I think like those, those are a bit hit and miss, but I think, yeah, again, some of my favorite stories that we've done have come from searching through newspaper archives. And you know, the good thing about that is then you already have a name probably, like that's going to be somebody who's been interviewed, you have a little bit of information. So you're kind of coming into it from a little bit of research already there. Another thing I do, and this is like super hit and miss, so maybe this is like one of the least efficient ways of finding stories, but it does work, is having Google Alerts set up. So like, you know, I have Google Alert set up for like random stuff, like I have one for Beirut and then I have one for Hamra, which is a neighborhood in Beirut. And then I'd like, yeah, I think, and I just have, I have a million, like just random combinations of phrases. Most of the time they don't come through to anything, but I think sometimes you'll get, you know, if you if you set up enough of them, you're going to every day get this kind of like daily digest of random articles, because it kind of puts you outside of your bubble a bit. I'll get sent articles from outlets that I wouldn't read ordinarily or places that I wouldn't have heard of before. So I think that can be a good thing to set up if you, whatever your kind of area of interest is, setting up a series of Google Alerts and tweaking them to figure out what works and what doesn't, to kind of get yourself a daily digest of like potential stories in your inbox.
Yeah, and I guess sort of the last, the last one that we wanted to really talk about is, you know, attending galleries and museums and lectures and going to places, going to performances or theaters or things that are happening in your local neighborhood that, you know, maybe you don't usually go to. One of a story that I did, I think what last year was about this Palestinian filmmaker, like guerrilla filmmaking unit. And the way I found that story was that there was a an exhibition commemorating one of the members at a gallery in London. And it sort of introduced me to this entire era of filmmaking in Palestine, but also all around the world that I didn't know about at all and brought the story. Or another example is while I was in Egypt, over the summer, a couple of years ago, I attended the Zor performance and the Zor is a very traditional ritual performance that's or not, you know, performance, but sort of it's a ritual that's done in Egypt and in other countries, sort of in Africa and the Gulf area. That's sort of about cleaning your spirits, not exercising them, but bringing your spirits in balance. And and I had never heard of it before. And going to this performance sort of opened up a whole world where we ended up spending months on this episode and chasing people down. And some of our producers actually went and attended Azar in per, in person, not just a performance. And I would have never heard of it if it hadn't been for me going to that theater that day and sort of watching the performance of it. So really putting yourself out there, not just by Googling things online, but also physically out there and going to places is really important. And you'll always find things in your neighborhood you hadn't really thought about before.
Yeah, I think that's something super important as well as just like actually speaking to people is is it's so different to finding thing, finding story pitches online and thinking that they might work out. And we we do this every time we, before we, before we even start working on stories properly, we'll always do pre-interviews, as Dana mentioned before. And I think like, the the whole point of that is basically just so you can ask the person that you wanted to interview, like, sometimes it's just like, is this the story or is there, is there a different story? Or do you, do you see this differently? And just kind of like chatting to people, especially like if they're sort of academics or or researchers is is a really good way of just like letting them tell you what actually is interesting about the story. Because I think, you know, there's often this sort of preconception you might have about a story going in and and kind of letting other people guide your your sort of way through that, I think is is something we try and do. I mean, like, I think for us, there's always this dance of like knowing, knowing enough about the story going in that you, you know, what, you know, what we talked about at the beginning, you know where the tension comes from and you know what the beginning, middle and end is. We need to know those things going in, but I think there's also a sort of element of leaving enough of it undiscovered for yourself so that you can genuinely have this like journey of discovery as you're producing the story. That it isn't fruitless. Like I think sometimes I can almost feel it myself if I'm doing a story, but I kind of know where the story is going. It feels somehow less exciting. And I think the best stories are the ones where you have those moments in interviews where you are genuinely surprised or a story genuinely takes a turn. And and you can feel that as a producer yourself, you're kind of going on this journey with the listener almost. And so I think that's something to consider when you're pitching stories is sort of getting to know the basics and doing a good amount of research beforehand, but also like allowing yourself a degree of 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 kind of detachment where you can you can kind of go on a journey yourself as as part of the, like, producing the story. So I think like, yeah, I think the overall theme for all of these things that we've just talked about is 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 just like following curiosity and and pulling at threads and peeling back layers and speaking to people until you feel like you're at a point where you have that full sort of narrative that we were talking about at the beginning. Yeah, I think that's kind of, did we, did we go over time? I think we're.
I think we're just about at time. I guess if there are any questions in the comments, anything from the audience, we'd be happy to sort of answer them in the time that we have left, in English or in Arabic, whatever you feel more comfortable in.
I should, do I have to add Melissa as well? I'm not sure. Chicken out itself. So I was trying to figure out, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that was really, really interesting, such interesting and very practical kind of tips you shared. And we have a couple of questions. One is, how do you, how 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 have you dealt with, or how do you manage with stories that are uncomfortable or taboo or like really pushing, you know, boundaries in, you know, in the context, whether it's politically or culturally, et cetera, yeah.
I mean, I think at least for Arabic shows, for Jessadi, for instance, this is something that we come across a lot, right? Because the show is all about the mind, the body and the spirit. And a lot of the topics that are discussed on the show and the personal essays that are sort of the testimonies that are given, sometimes there are things that aren't really spoken about in the region at all, if not entirely taboo. And it sort of comes down to us being able to tell the story in a way that's respectful and in a way that's nuanced. And it's not just sensationalizing, whatever the topic is. But at the same time, making space and giving the platform to those who have gone through those experiences to be able to speak about them in a place that, you know, where they can really open up and and be safe doing so. So at least that's for the Arabic shows, Alex. I I think with political topics as well, we usually have a different way to go about them.
Yeah, I mean, it totally varies from story to story. I think like, if we're going to be, I think if there's, if there's things that are going to come up in the interview that we know are going to be tricky, especially with the guests or things that might be challenging. I mean, this is part of the pre-interview process. We'll, you know, we'll always make sure that going into the interviews, everybody's on the same page and everybody knows what's going to come up and and that there are no surprises in the interview. I think just as a kind of general, like, I don't know if courtesy is really the right word, but like, I think you, you sort of have, you sort of set those ground rules before, if it's, if it's, especially if it's something very personal. Like people, people are giving you their time and and their story and their honesty. And I think like, for us, it's, it's important that we don't kind of put things into the interview that are unexpected. And I think when it comes to kind of political or more taboo things, there is always, there's always a lot of editorial back and forth, especially with the more tricky episodes like. But I think at the end of the day, we, the the way we deal with it is we, I think we we think of ourselves as the listeners. And so when it comes to sensitivities or things that might be kind of difficult to talk about, we try and think how we would, how we would hear a story like that and how we would like receive it. And I think that leads the way we like phrase things or the way we frame things or or word things. I mean, we're, you know, we're kind of, at the end of the day, like, I think we want to make stories that like please us and that we kind of feel like we would actually listen to. So I think that's sort of our guiding like principle with that kind of thing. But it really like, it really differs from story to story. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. And that's really important because a lot of, for a lot of audiences and podcasters also, the exciting, one of the exciting elements of podcasting is that we can talk about stories and and topics that aren't in mainstream media or can't be for various reasons that, you know, that that vary, yeah, depending on where you are in the world. So it's really important to be able to kind of learn from each other how to manage. Because we need to stay safe and protect ourselves and and everybody who's involved in our community. So thanks for that.
I think that's probably the, yeah, sorry. I was just gonna say, I I just remembered something when you were speaking. I think that 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 is probably one of our main kind of guiding principles as well as that making sure that, you know, whatever goes into the story is not going to in any way endanger the people who have given us their time to be interviewed for the story or any of our producers who are making it. And so, yeah, that's, that's like also a consideration that we take into account.
Yeah, definitely.
Great, great. One other question that came in is how are you staying, keeping yourselves inspired, staying inspired with all, you know, currently with closures of like art spaces, community spaces, culture, cultural spaces and so on, to explore your curiosity, you know, in real life? How do you stay inspired?
That's a really good question.
I think finding stories has become very different over COVID, actually.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, we've done a lot of like, we've, we've done a lot of like reaching out to our listeners and you know, there's been a few episodes, I think, over the last year where we've kind of reached out. We have, we're really lucky to have like a really kind of tight and like lovely community of listeners around Kani Cultures. And they're really responsive and engaged. And so, you know, there there have definitely been things where we've, we've put on Instagram about finding stories. If we, if we need a lead on somebody, something, or even just like hearing what our listeners wanna hear on the show is like really useful sometimes. And so we'll do like polls and like outreach things and even like one-on-one calls with listeners once a year. I think we do like a round of calls with a group of listeners and just kind of hear about what they want to hear and like, what's interesting to them. And I I guess crowdsourcing is is probably the right word for that, like sort of crowdsourcing ideas.
I think also, at least for me, it really ramped up, you know, my social media usage and I decided to use that for good, right? And tried to yeah, tried to really make the most of sort of Instagram and Twitter and really check who I'm following and see that I'm following people that, you know, are interesting and can inspire curiosity. And not just people, but organizations and institutes and and companies as well that provide content. And then internally, as a team, we've been really lucky to have an incredible team who sort of lead these creative sessions where once a month or once every couple of weeks, we sort of meet as a team and go over some sort of creative exercise together. And that's really a sort of spark and new curiosities and new interests and finding different ways either by listening to episodes that, you know, someone really likes and dissecting it and seeing what works and what doesn't. Or, you know, exercises, like I think this time it was an improv exercise that we had to do. And and that was really fun to be able to sort of step out of our comfort zones as producers and and the rest of the team and sort of see what we can make and and talk about it together. So I think both as a team and sort of each of us individually as producers, it's sort of both looking in and seeing what we can improve about the way that we look and find and see stories, but also looking out and changing the ways that we look for stories elsewhere.
Wow, fantastic, fantastic. Such good, you've given, you've given, you've shared such amazing perspective and very practical, like, yeah, people have been taking notes. Yes, yeah, thank you so much. So for everyone who's watching this, follow Kani Cultures on Instagram and and on social media, check out Kani Cultures online, the website, where you're going to find all the podcasts. Listen to those amazing podcasts. Like I said in the beginning, these are award-winning podcasts. So it's a really great way to kind of, you know, benchmark, in Kenya, we have, we like to say, we like to use the term benchmarking, like when you're trying to level up, find something and then kind of be inspired and work towards that. So thank you so much for joining us. And for sharing your time and your knowledge and your your perspective. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a good.